Call the order, neighborhood board meeting for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. New location, Alaway Golf Course Clubhouse, second floor. To those of you who were not able to attend in person today, based on the relocation, we apologize for for moving. We apparently got bid out from our old location, which, you know, personally I preferred, but we will be searching for new locations, trying to make it easier for the community to access moving forward. So, um, let's see. All right. First things first, Honolulu Fire Department, is Captain Schubert here this evening?
Yeah. Captain Ahuna filling in for Captain Schubert today.
Good evening, Captain Ahuna. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Marvelous. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. If you could give us your report, please.
For incident statistics for December two thousand and twenty-four, we have fires, structures zero, well, land brush, zero, nuisance, one, cooking, four, I'm sorry, cooking is zero, activated alarms or no fire or four. For emergencies, medical, we had thirty-three motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, zero, motor vehicle crash collision, three, mountain rescues, zero, ocean rescues, zero, and hazardous material incidents, one. For the fire safety tip and announcement for this month, we're going to talk about appliance and electrical safety. Minimize electrical fire risk in your home with these safety tips. Electrical work should only be performed by a qualified electrician. Check your electrical cords. If they are cracked or damaged, replace them. Do not overload wall outlets or power strips and use certified power strips that meet safety standards. Extension cords should not be used long term. They are designed for temporary use only. Follow all manufacturers' instructions for your appliances. And for more information, safety tips and checklist, you can visit fire.honolulu.gov. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
A quick question coming from myself. Those three vehicle incident reports that you had there, the three crashes, I believe?
Three motor vehicle collisions, yes.
Yes, sir. As somebody who has been rear-ended twice in the last two weeks by people on their phones, I would love to know if you have the information in front of you, what the reason for those, uh, those collisions were.
The reason, um, normally, yeah, that would be a police report. Normally, we're concerned with, um, just medical, uh, primary care, patient care and cleaning up any debris as far as the reason. We don't have that in our reports usually.
No worries. Well, we haven't seen any debris, so you guys must be doing a great job. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department on the board?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Can you hear me? Okay.
I can't hear you.
Any incidents related to fireworks or anything, any comments you want to make about fireworks in this area?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm sure everybody saw the, the news over the New Year's and, um, there, you know, as far as the fire department is concerned, we still stand by our decision with the, um, the laws and we're gonna enforce it. We're gonna help to, uh, support any of the laws that come from our, our governor or our mayor as well. And, yeah, we're just always gonna be fire preventative as much as possible.
But not too much in this area?
I'm sorry?
Uh, not too much activity in this area. How was it?
Oh, for our Wailea Kahala area, it was a pretty quiet night, actually, considering what they had in Kali.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure thing.
Does anybody in the community have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? All right, Captain Ahuna, again, thank you so much for your time this evening. Have a lovely night.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Up next, we have representative from the Honolulu Police Department, Lieutenant Nakamura. Are you here this evening? I believe we have somebody else.
Good evening. This is, yeah, good evening. This is Lieutenant Miura. Aloha and Happy New Year for everybody, to everybody. I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to say a quick condolences to, um, our HFD Ohana for what happened. Please let us know if you guys need anything. You guys are always in our thoughts and prayers as first responders. Thank you. Um, going to the statistics, for motor vehicle thefts, we had four burglaries, we had eight thefts, we had twenty, and unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle, we had twenty-three. Total cost for service, five thousand eight hundred sixty-five. Going into the, uh, the tips for this month, being January, it's back to school for, back to school, back to work for a lot of people. So driver tips first, um, look out for pedestrians who may be hidden from view by other vehicles that have stopped. Be extra vigilant for pedestrians at dawn and dusk. Anticipate the difficulties of the elderly or young children who are crossing the street. And if you're a pedestrian, make eye contact with drivers to ensure that they see you. Be especially careful of vehicles that are turning at intersections. Drivers may be looking out for other vehicles instead of pedestrians. And if buses or other large vehicles are blocking your view, wait for them to pass before crossing. And that's all I have.
Perfect. Also, I'd like to thank the HPD for the increased presences that we've been seeing, I think, for the past two weeks, I want to say. Um, it's marvelous to see you guys out there. There's been a lot of great response. Um, I witnessed a smash and grab, I think, about a month ago, and you guys had units on the site within three minutes and people in the neighborhood looking and about five. So you, you guys have really been on your game. Just want to give a quick shout out of appreciation for that.
Thank you. We try.
Does anybody on the neighborhood board have any questions for HPD?
Quick question. The statistics you gave us, I think you said twenty-three auto break-ins. Is that just for this district or the wider area?
That's just for the Wailea Kahala area.
Is that more than normal then?
Uh, that's up from last month, yes. That is up from last month. But I think, um, generally during that time, there's, you know, during that December timeframe, I want to say generally that the numbers are usually higher because of, uh, you know, just the holidays, people have a lot of items in their vehicles, that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I, um, I want to give you an update and see if you can give me an update on the problem of the homeless, uh, on the beach, on Kahala Beach. I'm not sure if you've been, you know, part of the effort, uh, to get this, uh, long-term camper off the beach that's got a very ugly, large, sometimes too large, green tents. It's about, oh, two hundred yards, let's say a hundred, maybe more like a fifty to a hundred yards west of Wailei Beach Park. You know, I did complain to the mayor. Mayor did have the police remove the guy, but he came back. Lately, I noticed that often his tent is down during the day, but the tent goes up at night. Now, this individual, I have been told by people in the know that he's the largest, uh, drug dealer, fentanyl dealer on the east side. And he's a large, scary individual, uh, does not look local. He is sometimes in with others in the tent. But could you, uh, can you continue patrolling the beach several times a day, especially at night, and get that guy off the beach once and, once and for all? I must say that tourists who are at Sony Open, other tourists have complained about it. What's happening with Hawaii, you know, when people are living on the beach? I understand that tourism numbers are down, and that is one of the problems we have. The, uh, the the feeling that, um, the beaches are, uh, becoming unsafe and dirty because of the problem. And the other thing, too, if, if there are several days when there's nobody in that tent, could the police at least call the city, proper city officials, and get that, uh, debris off the beach? It's dirty, filthy, and certainly unhealthy for residents, families, children, et cetera.
Okay, um, yeah, we'll see what we can do. Of course, you know, the, the easiest thing, too, is always if, if you, if any violations are spotted, is to call nine-one-one and have an officer come out there. That way, we know for sure that the person is there. And it always helps if somebody, the caller can meet with the officer. That always helps. That way, they can point out exactly, express the concerns, everything that's going on.
Yeah, I've called many times and they've asked me for, you know, what's the closest, uh, entry to the beach uh, to the individual. I always tell them, well, it's Wailei Beach Park. It's really just a few steps uh, to the right when you go to the beach at Wailei Beach Park. But I've called the police many times. Called the mayor's many times also. Mayor says he's trying to get the police to do something about it, to get rid of the guy once and for all. So it's, there's really nothing more I can do. I'm not going to do it myself, obviously. I'd be asking for serious problems.
Okay.
And what I can do.
Uh, do we have any questions for HPD from the community this evening? All right, awesome. Lieutenant Miura, thank you so much for your time this evening. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Up next, we have a representative from the Board of Water Supply. Anyone from the Board of Water Supply here this evening?
Yes, good evening. I'm here. This is Lorna speaking. Can you hear me?
We can indeed. Welcome this evening, Lorna. Thanks so much for showing up.
Sure, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. Um, very quick announcement for this month. This month, I don't have any main breaks to report for December. The only announcement I have for this month is about a, um, encouraging everybody to do a home water audit. So the Board of Water Supplies Water Wisdom Program, we're offering tools to help customers to conserve water and detect leaks. So through this program, you can learn how to perform a home audit to ensure your fixtures and appliance, appliances meet low-flow standards and also to identify leaks that waste water. So if you go to our website, www.bordawatersupply.com forward slash water wisdom, you can watch a short video on conducting your own water audit, and, um, we are offering free water audit bags, um, a booklet on how to do this at the Board of Water Supplies Public Service Building on South Beretania Street. Um, so encourage everybody to pick one up and check your homes for, um, to an audit at your home. That's the announcement I have this evening. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody from the board have any questions?
I saw an ad on TV, something about, um, water collection systems. There's something going on to help out with that. Can you help out with that? Is that on the website?
Um, the only water collection, we do have rain barrels, um, that, um, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, um, there's two ways to get rain barrels. We do have, um, we do have a workshop that we conduct about three to four times a year. We're supposed to have one sometime in March, and those are thirty dollars for a thirty-five gallon barrel. We also have, if you don't want, uh, those are recycled barrels, by the way. If you want a brand new one, um, encourage you to go to probably, um, Home Depot, those, somewhere where they do have it in stock. It is seasonal. Um, and you can purchase a rain barrel, fifty-five gallon rain barrel, um, and we do have rebates for that. So check our website out, and you can apply for rebate for that particular one.
Uh, there's a great supplier of rain barrels called The Urban Farmer located down by Nimitz near the airport. Um, they always have in stock, so if you're looking for a last-second pickup, highly suggest them. Dealt with them extensively. Very professional staff will lead you in the right direction. Urban Farmer.
Thank you.
My pleasure, Lorna. Um, and then also, Lorna, I, I did deal with somebody from your brothers and sisters over at ENV this weekend. Um, just wanted to let you guys know, the individual you guys sent out, very professional, lovely guy named Kavika, um, but was just an absolute joy to deal with. So you guys got some great staff over there. So thank you so much for that.
Well, thank you. Was that DFM you said?
Uh, Kavika.
Oh, I bet, at DFM?
Uh, E V, ENV.
Or ENV, ENV, oh, okay. So, um, a different department, but we were sister, yep.
It was a water, it was a water bill issue, so they had sent him on over, but
Oh, okay.
Great, great staff, so. Um, does anybody from the community have any questions for Lorna? I think we're all set on this side. Lorna, you have a great evening. Thanks again for attending.
Thank you. You too. Bye-bye.
Bye. Um, up next, filling in the vacancies. We love our community engagement. Please get engaged with us. Is anybody interested in filling any positions on the neighborhood board this evening from our lovely concerned community who've shown up tonight? Going once, going twice. Uh, Sub District Two. And is that two positions for two? Oh, so Sub District One and then, oh, who, because we got at-large, yeah, at-large. Two. The at-large and then Sub District One, and Sub District One is which, uh? No worries. We'll get back to you guys on that. Um, but up next, uh, do we have a representative from the Office of the Governor? Dr. Josh Green.
Aloha.
Hello, Patty. We've missed you.
I know. I've missed you guys. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I am going to put in the chat a link to the governor's newsletter. So that should be in there now, and, um, you've probably noticed some construction at Diamond Head. Um, the DLNR is, uh, working on a rock fall mitigation project that started sixth of January and will go till roughly the end of July. They are working at night, so you probably have seen lights coming from the tunnel there, and, um, they should be finished with construction on daily at ten o'clock at night. They start around two P M. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
Um, uh, I believe three meetings ago, we did have a gentleman here and his wife, Barry Sullivan, and I think Nancy Sullivan was her name, inquiring about the DOE facility near the, uh, that loop right there. I forget the name of it. I apologize, but, um, the DOE facility had not cleaned up or had the trees cut in quite some time, and it was beginning to become a liability concern, a visual impact, um, and something that they had really wanted to get done because it was a state facility. I believe we had inquired with you. I just wanted to check up and see if there's any progress that I can report to them.
I don't have an update on that. Is the property still in that same condition?
I was there, I believe, two weeks ago, and it seemed to be either in a, uh, in the exact same or similar state as before.
Okay, let me bring that back to the governor's office and see if I can get an answer for you guys.
Appreciate that. Thanks so much. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Patty?
Yeah, Patty, on the rock mitigation thing, I know I have been, uh, some of the people in the area have talked to me about that. They says it's, you know, noisy, et cetera. Has there been any effort to, um, talk to neighbors in the area to let them know how long it will go on? If there are really serious problems with noise, is there anyone, anyone they can contact? I guess the other question, is it just within the tunnel, uh, the vehicular tunnels that you're doing, the rock mitigation or also on the cliff faces, uh, you know, and elsewhere?
I'm not sure the extent of the mitigation, so I can, um, I can ask. I, I work at the DLNR, so I can ask and, um, find that out for you. In terms of noise and, um, issues with the construction itself, if people have issues, if there, if there are problems, they can go ahead and email dlnr@hawaii.gov. That comes actually straight to my office, and we will forward that on to our Division of Parks Administrator so that they're aware that there's an issue.
I mean, no doubt, we don't want any rocks falling on people's heads.
Right.
So it's something that's important to do.
Yeah, they're trying to balance, you know, you guys know how popular Diamond Head is, and so they don't want to close it down completely during this construction phase. So they're just trying to balance, um, you know, allowing visitors and people to access the site while still being able to carry out this project.
Yeah, no, I think it's important and it's a good idea. Uh, is Diamond Head still staying open till six o'clock or?
Uh, no, actually, um, it closes early during this construction phase, so it's gonna close, it's been closing at two o'clock, I believe, is when the tunnel closes. So, um, it opens at the regular time, but yeah, it's been closing early.
But if you want to hike, do it in the morning.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I could pass the information.
Um, Patty, I would also ask that if, you know, there's knowledgeable men and women on the ground over there, uh, doing this project, that if they can expand and kind of explore the, uh, fire mitigation concerns that we've been having in that area. Um, if, you know, they're on the ground and can think of some projects and maybe start getting some submissions for that, too. That has been a major pressing community concern that we've had time and time again. So, um, especially with the, uh, the homeless population that has been, uh, relocated to the base of the mountain over there.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody in the community have any questions for Patty, Representative of the Governor's Office?
Just to follow up what Christian said, Patty. Um, some, you know, people who have come to our neighborhood board meetings who live in the area and are really scared about fires, uh, happening, they suggested fire breaks. Is that something DLNR has looked into, uh, creating, creating fire breaks on Diamond Head? I think they're doing that in areas around Cocoa Head.
There's definitely concern because it's such a dry area over there. What, what point they're at with actually constructing fire breaks and stuff like that, I'm not sure. So I'll have to ask and let you know.
Yeah, if you can come back, because I know, uh, about a year ago or so, we were asking a representative from DLNR to come to a meeting, talk about a, uh, fire mitigation plans for Diamond Head.
Okay.
Yeah, thus, but thus far, nobody has come, but we certainly appreciate you're here.
I try.
All right. So, uh, no questions from the community for Patty? All right, Patty, thank you again so much for your time this evening. Good to see you back.
Mahalo. Yes, good to be back.
Up next, Casey Abe, where are you hiding, my friend?
Good evening, Chair. I can see my screen here.
Yep, having a little, can you guys hear him?
Let me see if you can speak up.
Okay.
Please, okay.
Okay, um, yeah, good evening. Happy New Year, Chair Christian and members of the Wailea Kahala Neighborhood Board. Uh, Casey Abe from the State Duty Highways Division. During the November's meeting, there was a concern about the flashing message boards at the intersection of Vineyard Boulevard and Principal Street. Apparently, the city was doing some work along Principal Street for a couple of days. Unfortunately, the message board did cause traffic delays, and we apologize for the inconvenience. Um, during a previous fuel investigation, I noticed, uh, we have a new flexible delineator post from the end of the H-10 freeway eastbound to Inaco Avenue and Waikouli Street intersection. I found out that our director's office and our district office received complaints about vehicles traveling eastbound from the Wailei Avenue on ramp and crossing over the double solid white lines to enter the left turn lane and Inaco Avenue intersection so they can make the left turn onto Inaco Avenue. Therefore, we decided to install delineators on the double solid white line to reduce the potential of a future accident. Also, during a previous fuel investigation, I noticed a yellow sign at the intersection of Hunakai Street was knocked down. Working on our district office to install the sign during my fuel investigation last week. During my fuel investigation last week, I noticed a new homeless encampment under the pedestrian overpass along the Wailei Avenue off-ramp. And another homeless encampment at the Wailei Avenue westbound near the Sharp Clinic. I'm working with our homeless community to remove these two encampments. Our maintenance crew managed to remove or paint over most of the graffiti within the neighborhood board area, but unfortunately, the graffiti artists gave us more work to do, so I'm working our maintenance crew to address the new graffiti. And I want to thank the Neighborhood Board and especially Board Member Himida for your patience. After approximately nine months, we finally replaced the existing speed limit fifty, minimum forty sign with just a speed limit fifty sign on the H-10 freeway. Thank you for your patience. And on Friday, um, on the November twenty-second, I received a call from Chair Christian, offering his company services to design a new landscaping under the viaduct. Thank you, Chair Chris, uh, Christian, for your services. Also on the agenda is the safety concerns at Wailei Avenue and Kilowatt Avenue intersections for pedestrians and bicycles. I did a field inspection today, and I noticed that all four left turn movements have protective left turn arrows, which is the safest traffic signal phasing for pedestrians and bicycles. Although all the corners have pedestrian activated push buttons, not all have pedestrian countdowns to warn pedestrians of how much time they have left to cross the street. So I'll be working our traffic branch and our city, uh, partners, DTS, and Deputy Director Nucci to install these new pedestrian countdown signals. And finally, on the agenda was the safety concerns for the pedestrian and bicyclists crossing the Wailei Avenue and Hunakai Street intersection. This section has a major, um, safety concern because there's no protective left turn arrows for motorists making a left turn from the Maoka and Makai side of Hunakai Street onto Wailei Avenue. So many, uh, so we may need to implement a protective left turn arrow movement for all left turns like Kiliao Avenue. Uh, pedestrian active bus, uh, push buttons were not present at all intersections, and not all have the pedestrian countdown. Again, we'll be working with our traffic branch who work with our city counterparts, DTS, and Deputy Director Nucci to adjust these safety concerns. Uh, this concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Um, before we jump into questions on the community board, I know that there are two individuals here who have been directly impacted by the crosswalk situation, um, who have, uh, came here this evening to have their voices be heard and to help ensure that what occurred to them doesn't happen to somebody else. Um, so if we can open the floor up to them first, um, let's, uh...
Thank you. Can you hear me? Oh?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mahito Sakai. I'm here with my wife Naomi. Uh, we're residents of Wailei Kahala. Um, thank you. Hi, okay, great. Uh, thank you for your time. I'm here today to share my story of an accident, um, happened on Wailei Avenue and, and Hunakai, and to implore you to, uh, improve that intersection. On October fourth, Friday, at eight-thirty P M, I was, uh, walking from Kahala Mall towards Kahala Market. So at that time, I was waiting for the, the light to turn, and I saw the green light, and I saw three pedestrians walking towards me from, uh, uh, Kahala Market. So I proceeded to walk Maoka, uh, on that crosswalk, the Mark Crosswalk, and three steps after I started walking, I got hit on the left side by a truck. I was hit by the truck, and according to witnesses, I hit the, uh, the windshield, the, the head of the, the top of the truck, and also impacted the, uh, pavement afterwards. I was sent immediately to the Queen's Hospital for E R. Um, I was sent immediately to the Queens Hospital for ER, went through multiple surgeries, several blood transfusions. Uh, I lost a part of my kidney, a lot of my functions on the left side. I'm still, uh, in under repair. Um, and I am still, uh, going into recuperation. Based on this accident, uh, I've been, we've been sharing with our residents and neighbors. And they've also experienced, um, tra- or near misses at this intersection, which got us to get very concerned about the safety of this intersection. And my wife Naomi, uh, asked HPD for their cooperation to obtain statistics of that intersection, which I hope can share to you today.
So the statistics have shown that just in this intersection since two thousand seventeen, on an average basis, I've excluded twenty twenty and twenty twenty one simply because of COVID. And there was, assuming that there was light traffic. On average, there's been twelve point five accidents in that intersection each year, which means that there's been at least one accident per month. In twenty twenty four, that number was eight. However, of those, seven of them included injuries like my husband or injuries, uh, not injuries, but a vehicle, um, vehicle damage over three thousand dollars, which basically means that every two months, shy of every two months, a vehicle or a human being is being hurt right now on that intersection. So to the point of what we would like to request or implore is a light that is more similar to the one that they have in Kilowea versus Wailei. Uh, I believe that it is a four way. The one in Hunakai is extremely dangerous where vehicles as well as humans can be T-boned very quickly. And like Mahito shared, a lot of our neighbors have had many, many near misses. And we've had a couple of neighbors who actually say they go around towards Kilowea because they are scared of this intersection. So I do hope that this story does give light as to how dangerous this intersection is and that these lights are fixed immediately.
Thank you for your comment. I, I agree with you. We, we may need to, um, install protective left turn movements from Hunakai Street, Maoka and Makai. Just like Kilowea, I noticed that this intersection does not have a protective left turn movement like Kilowea. So I'll be working with our traffic branch who will do the final assessment and then work with our city and county to install these new protected left turn movements. But I do notice that was a problem. I did, when I went out this, this morning, I did notice there were conflicts with pedestrians crossing Wailei Avenue and vehicles trying to make the left turn onto Wailei Avenue going east and westbound. So I can understand your concern and I'll work with our traffic branch and our administration.
Um, on top of that, Casey, so, uh, Mojito, Naomi and myself have been in close communication. Um, if pedestrians need some sort of better protection in terms of, uh, even doing a protected left hand turn lane, I believe the technical term is a pedestrian scramble for a crosswalk where all the pedestrians cross at once, even if it's in a diagonal direction, which would allow all the pedestrians to move at once. And then when the light turns green, traffic can just go without having to wait for the pedestrian, wait for the kind of half turn into the left hand lane, a car swerves out from behind them to try and make the light. Um, is that something that we could look into, something that we might be able to push forward?
Yes, um, this is where I would again talk with our traffic branch. They would have to do the study. And if it's, um, recommended, they can do an always stop similar to intersection in Waikiki, where they stop all four ways, movements and pedestrians can cross diagonally. North to south, east to west movements. So I would have to talk, I would inform our traffic branch and have them take the assessment. And again, we will have to work with our city counterpart because they help us with the traffic signal timing. So we may have to make adjustments so we can still maintain the traffic flow to the various intersections to this corridor. But yes.
We've got one of the representatives here with us tonight, hopefully, so we'll make sure that that request is heard and whatever you guys need to help push it through on our end, please let us know. We're here to help.
Sure.
See your question. So Casey, you do have, um, authority over, uh, that intersection? Wailei and Hunakai, in other words, you just don't need to dump it on the city, the DTS?
Yes, normally what it is, is, um, this is a state, uh, highway. So we do the assessment. We do work with the city to make sure what's the best, um, design to ensure that have optimum traffic flow and to maintain pedestrian safety. So first thing they would evaluate, you know, is it justified to make an always stop? If it's justified for Hunakai, they have to look at how it affect the traffic signalization and traffic flow at Kilowea Avenue. Because it, you know, so you may have to change Kilowea Avenue to always stop also just to maintain the traffic flow and signal timing. But if we can make Hunakai a left, protect the left turn like Kilowea, you may be able to maintain the traffic flow and the timing synchronization to that corridor. So that's why it's a, it'll be a traffic study for sure.
Let's say that historically, I've been on the board for forty years and I can't count all the times I have asked that intersection to be fixed. And, um, you know, this is DTS people said, oh, we've studied it. It's fine. It's safe, et cetera, et cetera. Um, when we know it isn't, uh, I, if I can just ask you, where was, uh, you were going Makai to Maoka from the Kahala Mall side to the Kahala Market side? Is that what you're saying? All right, the truck that hit you was the truck making a left?
Left, coming down Hunakai, coming down Hunakai, making a left going towards Hawaii Kai.
I see. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I know that is, that's extremely dangerous. You know, I, I do auto accidents as a personal injury lawyer. I've had five, at least five, uh, of those accidents. You know, somewhere within a block, in that intersection, within a block. Uh, there was one more that happened over Christmas vacation, uh, who retained me. And it's, um, it's a very violent, dangerous intersection. And the, and I'd say please have it fixed. Um, okay.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I also do understand there has been previous studies of that intersection. However, I think this was before the Kahala Market was, was, was built. And after Kahala Market was built, I think there's a much more, a lot of, um, traffic going there. So I think it should be revisited again.
Right.
Yeah, again, I would, uh, I would talk to our traffic branch to, um, do an assessment, reassessment, especially as, um, you mentioned that the, uh, new market have come up and there's more traffic.
Sorry, Casey, can I ask, um, when you say a, uh, protective left turn, does that mean that the opposite direction would be at a stop?
Uh, yeah, so when it is, when you say a protective left turn, it means pedestrians cannot cross because it's the cars will be making their left turn. Just like how you make a left turn from Wailei Avenue up Hunakai. It's a protective. So therefore pedestrians cannot cross Hunakai. That's right. So it's a protective left turn movement. Right now, Hunakai, uh, going Maoka and Kai is permissive. See, so it's just a green, uh, green, um, light. So pedestrians are walking, but cars can make the left turn when it's cleared. In this case, when we change it to a protective, we'll make it a protective left turn. Pedestrians cannot walk, cannot cross. It's just like how it's at Kilowea Avenue.
I see.
Avenue because they have double left turns. They have, it's like in four phases. One left, one movement going up Kilowea Avenue, left turn, true movement. So only pedestrians on the Ma- Makai side can, uh, cross. Then coming from, um, Waikai side, the double left turn and moving straight and pedestrian and cars going straight westbound. So only pedestrians on the Maoka side can walk. Nobody else can walk because you have people making a left turn and try and vehicles going straight. And same thing in the way, uh, or in Maoka, when they make the left turn straight, only pedestrians this side can walk on. That's what you mean, effective, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, just one more thing to add because post Mojito's accident, we've been talking to a lot of neighbors and a lot of people who work at Kahala Market. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, even for Wailei Avenue, even though there are, there is that, um, particular left turn arrow, green arrow, where only the left on Wailei Avenue, only people who want to take a left can take a left. There's been numerous incidents where people trying to take a left had to come to a halt because somebody ran a red light. I'm assuming, obviously, this is just my assumption as to why they think they can go on towards H1 is because of that green arrow and they thought that their side was green or whatever. But just so you know, it's not, it definitely for Mojito's incident and the scariest part is the Hunakai side. But even for the Wailei side, there's been a couple of people who have had really short, uh, they haven't been into an accident, but they've almost been T-boned because of that.
Yes. And another thing I noticed about Hunakai intersection, there's no, uh, uh, protective island. Uh, if you notice Kilowea Avenue, there's a right turn movement, but there's a small island where pedestrians walk onto the island before they cross Kilow, uh, Wailei Avenue. I noticed this morning that, um, cars coming down Hunakai, making the right turn onto Wailei. You know, pedestrians crossing, they gotta stop. But sometimes they just go. So we may have to put a sign up, you know, watchful pedestrian making their right turn on red. That's another thing I noticed. So again, I'll have to talk to my traffic brands, but again, the Hunakai Street, yes, I agree. It's a little more dangerous than the Kilowea Avenue intersection.
Well, it sounds like we're all in agreement that, uh, there needs to be a change. There needs to be a new solution brought forward. If anyone's going to be able to do it, Casey, we know it's you. You're the most responsive person we get to talk to. So we look forward to seeing what solutions you and your team come up with. And again, if you need us to apply any pressure with any other groups, please let us know. This is a priority on our list and we want to make sure that, uh, we get some meaningful change soon.
Uh, what, what you can do is have the Neighborhood Board write a letter to our Director of Transportation because we understand this will be costing funds, uh, to, uh, make the change. So by writing a letter to our Director, he can, um, inform our traffic branch to, uh, reprioritize this intersection for any type of traffic signal improvements.
We'll have one drafted up and sent over very shortly.
Yes. And if you can copy me, that would be great. So I can follow up with your traffic.
Absolutely.
Casey, uh, by the way, do you have any, uh, power or influence over the, uh, traffic signaling downtown, going up Alec, Alokeia Street? At the, um, you know, I kind of at between the four, four to six o'clock time slot, the commuter traffic.
As for the timing, installing the traffic signal timing, you have to discuss that. We are counterpart, uh, Deputy Director Nucci is online here because the Seating County, um, kind of manages the traffic signal timing for Seenu. They're part, that's part of their main to screens with the state. But we do work with them, where there's a complaint, you know, um, about traffic signal timing. We, I, I inform my traffic branch and our traffic branch works with, um, DTS people to look at it.
Yeah, because the traffic signals are not synchronized. You have, uh, four, uh, four traffic signals right in a row. Queen Street, Merchant Street, King Street. And then the, uh, pedestrian crosswalk between, uh, King Street and Beritania Street. And those lights are not synchronized, uh, downtown. I know the buildings and people downtown have complained about that for a long, long time. But since they put the, um, the, the bike lane on the, uh, west side of Alokeia Street, which nobody ever uses, it only goes three blocks. They've taken a lane away and now, uh, those of us who are in the Pacific Guardian Center, Davis, Davies Pacific Center, sometimes we're waiting a half an hour to forty minutes stuck in the parking garage, not being able to get out. Well, if those traffic signals could be synchronized, uh, it would, it would be infinitely better.
Yeah, Alokeia is a Seating County road, so I would have to defer that to, um, the city and.
Okay.
There's, we, we need to take care of the Nimitz Highway.
Yeah, okay. Oh, you take care of Nimitz Highway, huh?
Yeah, that's, that's a state highway, so.
Okay, well, that impacts, it impacts, uh, Nimitz Highway because, uh, the Nimitz Highway, they're making, uh, the left and the right turns to go up Alokeia Street to get to the freeway on ramps. So that's the start of the problem. All the, you know, all the hundreds of cars that are turning from Nimitz Highway up Alokeia Street during that time period. Oh, in that sense, you are related to it. But anyway, we have made plans.
Thank you for that, Rich. I think we have a community question for Casey.
In support of my neighbors, I'm from Palolo, but I do travel down this road a lot. Uh, not at night, I think you said Friday eight thirty. I usually go at Saturday, Sunday, six thirty for donuts at Pur Bay now. But considering there are restaurants in the shopping center, people could be drinking, um, leaving, driving. It would also be worth it to have HPD kind of increase the patrol in the area, especially like Pauhana time when people may be leaving the bars and not doing safe things too. So I am also in support of the city also supporting some type of solution for the pedestrians that could be, you know, going home from work at the mall at that time too. So, um, yeah, it is a community concern for all.
Absolutely. We've actually echoed a very similar concern as well. So nice to see it being brought up. And, uh, you, Casey, but also to our brothers and sisters over at HPD as well. Um, just increasing presence over in that area, Pauhana time to make sure that pedestrians are able to get to their homes safely without being hit by a drunk driver and then having to employ Rich to bring it all home.
Uh, Casey, I do have one last comment on the, um, Hunakai Wailei area. It's an area where I have observed that many incidents of people running yellow and red lights. They always seem to be a hurry there. So maybe elevating the crosswalk would help to slow people down.
Yeah, again, um, in, uh, the Neighborhood Board's letter to the Director, um, you folks can make recommendations to the Director about, you know, installing the red light cameras that has, the pilot has been completed. And now we are moving forward to installing these red light cameras, um, at other intersections. So you can ask the Director to probably install one of those red light cameras at this intersection or raise across our crosswalks so cars can slow down even when it's a green light. There, there won't be speeding through the intersection. Sure. Again, the Neighborhood Board can, members can talk and, um, discuss it with their constituents and write a letter requesting for these various, um, improvements. And our Director will work with our division's traffic office to see what's, uh, best to install. And they will come back and present our study.
Thank you, Casey.
Um, okay, in the uh concern of getting things done in a timely manner. Um, I'd like to raise a resolution that uh in the next couple of days, I will write a letter. To the Director of DOT, CC and Casey Abe and other interested parties. Echoing the concerns, each and every single one that we've spoken about this evening, uh and communicating that to the director. Uh, can I get a second? All right, um, all in favor? Perfect, all right. Resolution passes. We'll have that letter off in a couple of days. We can get moving on this. Um, does anybody else in the community have any questions or concerns for Casey Abe from the Department of Transportation? Excellent, Casey, as always. Thank you for your time. It is an absolute joy to have you here.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're looking forward to the letter.
Sir, have a good evening. All right, up next, Mayor Rick Blangiarde's representative. Do we have a representative from the mayor's office?
Aloha, Chair Delcavetto. Uh, this is John Nucci, Deputy Director of Sining County's Department of Transportation Services. Here on behalf of Mayor Rick Blangiarde. Um, I still absolutely regret that I have not made it in. In person to see you. I'm just dealing with some um capuna care issues right now, but. Um, I don't have anything from previous meetings before last month's recess. Um, but I do stand ready. I've been logging any com- um comments that have related to the city. Um, in the background, and if anybody has any questions, I can take those down.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for the mayor's representative, John Nucci?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, well, I I I don't know if you heard the question. That I I posed to Casey, Casey Abe, um.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I mean, we really uh have a horrible problem uh on. Getting out of the Pacific Guardian Center and getting out of the Davies Pacific Center. Um.
We're already actually um uh working on that right now, so um, but I will note that, you know, just for the record. But yes, I mean, I was also in a meeting with mayor when you, when you communicated with him, so um he has us on it already and we can, we'll be uh ready to report back for that. But it does not necessarily pertain to this board, so if you don't mind, we might take this offline and contact you directly.
Yeah, yeah, but it's it's it's, I can't tell you. Well, it is, I mean, it is a board concern because it, you know, concerns uh, you know. A lot of people in the area being basically uh stuck in those parking garages for half an hour or more.
Well, John, you heard the concerns earlier, yes?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect.
But thank you, I I, you're working on it and the mayor uh has the idea. I know the buildings have appealed it. Uh, so the downtown office buildings are on it also. And it's uh, it's very important uh for the uh, you know, economic welfare of the city and county. I mean, we all know that. Well, thank you very much.
Understood.
Perfect. Uh, does anybody from the community have any questions for the mayor's representative this evening? Uh, John, we hope everything is well with your capuna over on that side. It's nice to to see your face, know what you look like now, and uh we look forward to getting you down here in person one of these days and.
Absolutely, I'm gonna try next month.
Oh, no worries, but thanks for your time as always. Right, up next, Councilmember Tommy Waters. Tommy Waters or a representative from Tommy Waters' office? Amanda, how's it going this evening?
Oh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair de Cuervo and members. Amanda. That's if I hear, honor, thank you for me this evening. Uh, I do have a few um community updates in the way of. Pending requests for investigation that we have in with the administration. Um, so the first one is um. For the Hunakai Beach Access crumbling rock wall issue there. Uh, we're also in receipt of your concerns about uh the Moa Street parking during the Sony Open. So I happen to go, uh so, and I I'm sure that that might come up later this evening, and I'm happy to listen to that as well. Um, we had discussed a couple of months ago and even prior to that, the issue at nine four nine Kialaolu Street with the golf fence. Um, and I I think you folks received word, but I just wanted to double check. We did receive word back from DPP that the variance request was denied in December. Um, and for Wailei Beach Park. Seized, well, two requests, one happened for the flooding issue of the of the drainage canal there. And then also a drainage issue at the shower. Um, so those are with Department of Facility Maintenance and Department of Parks. And then um, we also have a request in regarding an abandoned flatbed truck. Um, near two, three, eight, seven Halehaka Street. Um. Apparently that truck has been there for quite a while since July twenty twenty four. Prelimarily, we did receive a response back through the Managing Director's Office that. The city doesn't have the capacity unfortunately to tow the vehicle um at this time because it exceeds weight limits. Um, and this, this is something that we've had difficulty uh addressing in the past with the. Administration regarding towing of oversized or or heavy vehicles. So far, the current and the previous toll contractors for the city just haven't had. The ability to tow those kind of vehicles nor to store those kind of vehicles. So that's something that we're still in discussions about exploring, you know, potential solutions for that. Um. It'll also be brought up during a budget discussions, which will begin in March this year. Um, we also have a pending request in for the failing seawall at four, five, eight, five Kahala Avenue. For CMU wall repairs at four, six, zero, seven Kahala Avenue. And for an overgrown coconut tree on the Makai side of four, six, one, five Kahala Avenue. Um, for legislative updates, I just want to highlight a few things. Um, Bill fifty relating to parades and street activities we've been talking about for quite a while. Um, we are still working very. Station services and our Corporation Council as well as the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Just this past Tuesday, Waikiki Neighborhood Board voted to support the current um draft. So we expect that to be heard in the February Transportation um Committee meeting, um and we're happy to update on that. And then um today in Transportation Committee, we heard Resolution twenty five dash one. Uh, regarding the zero, a vision zero uh plan that the city has for high pedestrian injury areas. Um, so we're happy to be moving that forward. Also in public safety, today there was um a very good. Informational briefing on the issue of fireworks. Um, there was some pretty good discussion um with. Police Department. Um, so I really encourage anyone who's interested in that issue to. Watch that video back. I put the link in the chat. Um, there's just a lot of good information in there regarding what the current challenges are. What HPD is doing to work with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office um on those things and and what what challenges they're facing. Also, we have Bill fifty two moving along related to electric bicycles. Uh, we know that's also a a common sort of hot topic in our communities as of late. Um, also related Bill sixty one related to wheelies. Um, that was also heard today in uh zoning. And then we also had a good informational update briefing from DPP on transient vacation rentals and BMBs. I've also uh linked, listed the link for that video in the chat as well for anyone who's interested. Office of Housing provided an update on the city's housing plan. Um, they provided a presentation and that link is in the chat as well. And then for uh folks who may not be aware, we do have a new leadership at the council um beginning this January. Uh chaired by Water, uh Chair Waters still. Now we have Vice Chair Matt Wire and we have Floor Leader Cordero. We also have a new lineup of committee assignments. Um, that I believe your board should have received uh an update on. And that's all I have this evening. I'm happy to take back any questions. Um, answer them now if I can or take them back. Thank you.
Well, first off, congratulations on your new position. Uh, personally, I already find you to be much more prepared and uh lively than your predecessor, so. Thank you so much. Uh, we appreciate your position and uh honestly, we think it's gonna be a joy to work with you. Um, also, thank you for saying my last name correctly. That is a once in a blue moon thing, so uh shout out. Um, let's see here, um, the uh golfing wall, the resident question, Mr. Nicolai was informed the day. That the decision was made, but thank you for passing that along. Um, the seawall repairs, uh you know, I would always press that as a major concern. For a lot of those residents over there. Um, we're losing a lot of beach. Uh, part of the beautiful thing about Kahala is we got some great beaches and would like to preserve that, so whatever we can do to help DPP move along. You know, uh pressing their director and then if that doesn't work, press the director, that's gonna show up the week after that, so. Um, does anybody have any questions on the board for Miss Amanda? All set. Does the community have any questions for Miss Amanda? Uh, and sorry, into the the microphone over there, please, and introduce yourself as well.
Hi, hello, sorry. Hi, my name is Strida Pazentiner. I just wanted to mention that I saw today, there was a post on the Facebook Kahala group. Uh, somebody found a drug needle and took a photo of it at the Wailei Beach Park. It was a quick moment that I saw it. I didn't print it out, but I did want to mention it because that is obviously a concern and um. I just thought it was appropriate to mention today since we're talking about that beach. Um, thank you. I have, I haven't been there in a long time, but I do. That many, actually a lot, or maybe all of the homeless that were. Uh relocated or moved off of Diamond Head during that cleanup were, they all live down at Kahala Beach Park. I have a. A friend um that lives down the street and he goes and he picks up uh garbage and tries to. Keep shrubbery and such clipped back to uh keep them from camping out and living in the bushes and such. And yeah, it's, I think I'll be a little upset when I get there. I've been going there since I was a little girl and Jack Lord would walk the beach and. You know, um, I just, it it, I cringe to see that photo of a drug needle. So I just wanted to mention it. It's not a question, but I hope we can. Make uh, keep our eyes out and obviously there's kids, you know, there are kids that play there and. And then families and I mean, that's hopefully what the scenario is still. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for sharing that. That is obviously very disheartening and concerning to hear. Uh, we do hope that us, the person that founded contacted HPD right away. Um, and and to that and to uh Board Member Turbin's comment earlier regarding the homeless encampments, you know, it's. As you folks are aware, it's an ongoing issue uh there and and many other places and um I know our office, myself specifically have. Uh submitted countless requests for enforcement and outreach services on Kahala Beach. Um, you know, it's an ongoing challenge as I stated and um. We can ask Department of Facility Maintenance if there's an opportunity to to remove the tent as Board Member Turbin requested. Um, but. Is it a chance, they have an opportunity under the stored property ordinance to retrieve those items? So it's not as if we would automatically just confiscate it in an enforcement with due notice. Um, and and put it in the trash um immediately unless someone doesn't, you know, claim it or or retrieve it. Um, but it is a possibility and I'm happy to make that request to Department of Facility Maintenance. Um, and anytime we receive a request that the encampment has returned, um, you know, we're happy to submit another request. And it is a bit of a a cat and mouse game, um, but to be honest, that's really. All we have for now. Um, and we just continue to work with our Department of Community Services and our core team. To uh just repeatedly reach out to these folks and and remind them that there are services available for them. Um, and really encourage them to take uh advantage of those.
Thank you, Amanda. Um. I I was wondering, I think a couple of our concerns throughout the night, we've had, uh, you know, just. A larger police presence would be appreciated within our 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 neighborhood. Um, I I, is there a way to increase the, like, I guess. It'd help increase the budget for more police officers that are assigned to our. Our area or anything like that? Because I mean, I think several of these concerns are all due to, you know, I think a lack of of oversight and of a, you know, presence. So is there something, way we can work on that as well?
Yeah, we we certainly can um make the request to HPD, you know, every year when it comes uh budget season. Uh Chair Waters has been really supportive of the Police Department and Public Safety. It it is one of our, you know, very top priorities and. Have included unprecedented amounts of money for the HPD budget for staffing and for uh services. Um, so we can include the money and and we can make the request to HPD that they. Prioritize and use some of those funds to focus on increased patrols for your community. We can do that.
Can we like make sure it's like earmarked a certain budgets for them? Because I mean, it would really be appreciated. I think everybody here has been talking about many different things of how. You know, just a larger, you know, presence would be appreciated. Um, even things in the past, I think we always have a. Unfortunately, Lieutenant Nakamura does a really great job, but he um. He's always like, we just don't have enough people and it takes a long time for us to get there just because we don't, we have such a large area and. And what it is, and at many times, it's it's just, you know, a larger police set presence would really be, I think, a bigger difference, so if we can make sure a budget is definitely appropriated for that. For us, especially since he's our, our representative and chair.
Thank you, yeah. I don't know that we can necessarily um do like a proviso specifically for those funds like we would. Uh, potentially if it was a CIP, a capital improvement project where we do sometimes. Add in provisos for specific amounts of money for specific projects, but I I'll definitely take that back and see what we can do to. Ensure that some of the money goes uh that way, whether it's through the budget process or just in discussions and communications with command for District Seven.
There's a lot of really good Supreme Court cases right now backing police response against. Um, sort of a crippling presence by the homeless in the community. Johns v Boise, I think was twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen. And the most recent Supreme Court decisions handed down have only uh further served to enforce that, so. There is the legislative and legal provisions there to get some work done. Um, it's just figuring out what we can do to help. Those resources that they need as well as the education to to further advance that, so. Whatever we can do on our end to help move this forward, please let us know. We're, we're here to push.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for your support.
Yes, I'd like to motion that you also write a letter for that.
I, well, you know what, uh, I, resolution to uh to write a letter to the city council. Requesting immediate HPD resources and education to allow the police to further and better do their job. Uh, do I have a second? Particular to our district, Wailei Kahala District Three. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I'd like to add that the police also be utilized to kind of clean up our beaches with regard to the homeless encampments.
Absolutely.
And just to, yeah, and I I just to what you're saying, uh, that green tent occupant, I mean, it's hearsay, but I've been told that. Is the major, a major drug dealer.
Yeah, I've I've, I have my intel and sorry. Yeah, I've, I've, I have my intel and sorry, it's a very uh important subject for me. I was assaulted at a local gas station last August and I have not worked for four months. Um, this homeless lunatic is not the type of person that's gonna go for an outreach program. And wants to better herself, we'll put it that way. Um, as a matter of fact, she's managed to get arrested forty times now in two years. So uh she's one-way ticket from Florida, huge criminal record. And many personalities that I had to fight for over a minute. And um, it's, it's, it's very traumatic, actually. I'm a big girl and I can imagine what that would be for Kupuna or uh somebody smaller. And um. Uh, sorry, I was late, so I apologize. I missed what you did speak of earlier about the tent. Um, my friend goes and he actually brings, he makes a concoction when he cooks for his dogs. And he lets the chicken stuff sit in a bucket and it stinks. And he goes and he pours that in these bushes so that these people don't. Don't can't come, keep coming back. And it is, it's drug dealers and I hear the woman who. Pimps out the dogs in front of a low gas station. Everybody knows of her. Uh, she's. Apparently doing tricks now at night down there. So it's obviously, I wouldn't want that in any neighborhood that I lived in. And it's just. Especially a shock with Kahala. Um, I believe many of those homes are empty. And that's why police aren't called as they were maybe ten, fifteen years ago when there are bonfires now on the beach. And I, I was telling my friend, how, how can that be? That's, that's completely illegal. As a matter of fact, HPD would come on those ATVs. From Waikiki, I believe. And um, there's a satellite station in Kahala Mall. Where I went to go talk to an officer and apparently. They're protected. So I wasn't able to go speak to the officer about my case. And needless to say, at trial, uh, nobody had come to me and gotten my report, but. It's, they're afraid of us. So I don't know who's protecting who, but. Um, it's kind of ridiculous at this point. And uh, that's why I just wanted to mention, you know, when you say outreach programs and getting them help. I agree, this is not all homeless. These, these people are not looking to go to a shelter or get a job. Or uh, you know, do better for the community, uh, that's for sure. And um, I don't want to say all, and I'm, I'm trying not to be judgmental, but I'm. Telling it like what I've been watching for years, for four years, all through COVID. Analyzing that whole street, uh, that intersection especially with panhandling. And ironically, uh, I, I even reached out. I went to the mayor's meeting. That's how I started getting involved. And I was gonna go to the Hawaii Kai meeting and I called. The Aloha Gas Station Company. And I said, what are you doing to keep our community safe? Um, how are you? Cause basically I don't see that at all. They're just struggling, you know, gassing up and people, you know, homeless and.
Mr. Strida, we do have a three-minute limit.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that and thank you for what he said about um getting more police presence, because. They're there, so I'm not sure why they're not driving around or doing a stop, but I'd appreciate it myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Strida.
And observations and what I'll do is um, I will renew. To HPD and our Department of Facility Maintenance for enforcement there. And I can also add a request to uh narcotics. Uh regarding the potential drug dealing happening out of that tent. Um, and see if we can get anywhere with that.
Perfect. Thank you, Amanda. Um, so in terms of resolution, uh, resolution to write a letter to the city and county. Perfect. Uh, vote, all in favor? Motion passes. Excellent. Um, yeah, it sounds like a lot of the community, a lot of the mentally unwell, everybody's suffering. So. Again, whatever we can do to find a path forward, let's try and go ahead and do that. Um, does anybody else in the community have any questions for Miss Amanda Zepeda? Perfect. Amanda, thank you so much for your time this evening. Welcome to your new position. It's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you so much. Glad to be here.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Amanda.
You too. Thank, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, for this evening only, live and in person, coming from Madison Square Garden, measuring seven feet tall and three hundred pounds. Tina Grandinetti, District Twenty Representative.
That introduction. I'm five-one, but I have tall girl energy. Um. Yesterday was opening day. It was really special. I got to have my um parents, my sister and my partner. Um, on the, my first floor session in the House Chamber. Um, it was awesome. And I have a few updates about what this coming session will look like for me. I have been assigned Vice Chair of the Committee on Transportation. And I'm also on housing and finance. We just finished up about a week and a half of like all-day-long fin briefings. I'm learning a lot. Working as hard as I can for District Twenty. Um. I am working on my bill package. Bill intro deadlines is next week. Um, my package is mostly related to housing and um, a lot of like. Smaller transportation issues. I'm really interested in supporting leading pedestrian intervals, um where pedestrian. Uh, crosswalks begin like three seconds before the green so that pedestrians have time to establish their presence in the street. Um, and it makes it easier for drivers to see them. Um, so you know, you know, those issues are really important to this neighborhood board. Let's see, what else? Um, I'm also co-convening the Working Families Caucus this session with Representative Capella. Um, our priority bills. One of them is paid leave, which is also a priority for. The Keiki Caucus and for our Labor Chair. So we have, you know, high hopes that we can get it at least. Hopefully pass it, at least get it um through the House. And we're also focusing on expanding access to SNAP. Um. I'm struggling to remember the other bills in our package right now. Um. I'm also a part of the Good Government Caucus. I'm not sure, I can't remember if this board has been a part of those conversations around good government reforms. Some of the other neighborhood boards have passed a resolution. Calling for certain reforms. Um, we are voting on the House rule, the new House rules. I believe tomorrow on the floor, we got a copy of them today. They are not everything we ever dreamed of, but I think they're a step, a really positive step in the right direction and. Um, make me really optimistic for getting more changes um through in the future. Um, some of those, the changes that the community was really pushing for require more time and staffing concerns and things like that. So I'm. Really hopeful about um our new House leadership and. Um, the twenty twenty-five session and I'm very grateful for all of you folks in the community who helped get me into this office. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit about my staff too. I have two session staff who are not here tonight. We have. Um, Kao, who is our policy researcher. He's a recent Richardson Law School grad. He'll be helping to make sure that I know my stuff on the more complex policy issues. Um, then we have Kao, I mean Sam, sorry, who's our committee clerk. He formerly worked for uh Senator. Chima Bakuro uh as a committee clerk last session. And then I have my office manager with me today, Emily. She is my one-year-round staff member. Um, and she'll be your first point of contact in my office if you have any concerns. Um, she's awesome. She is coming on board from Hawaii News Now as a digital producer and she's also um pursuing her masters. If you don't mind, I'll let her just come up and say hello.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily Cristobal, uh Representative Grandinetti's office manager. Um, I help really schedule her many, many meetings. So if you ever call our office, I'll probably be first line of defense, answering the phones. Um, answering, helping, uh, helping to answer emails, any questions that you have. Um, like Representative Grandinetti said, um, I'm also helping with communication. So. One of my big things is making sure that the community is educated about what happens at the state capitol. And bills that are really important and will impact all of you. So really focused on that education aspect of it and excited to be working with all of you guys.
Thanks, everyone. And uh, we're in room three oh four if you're ever at the Capitol. Um, and you can always give us a call. Five eight six, six three one zero. Thank you.
Before you get down from there, yep. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Miss Grandinetti?
Just a quick one. There's been a lot of talk about uh a photo, football homes being built. And part of it has been reducing the requirement for a lot of parking. And I'm wondering if there's been any discussion of allowing space. Uh, for electric bicycles and small motor scooters instead of automobiles.
Allowing space on the roads or in parking?
In the facility, um, housing facility.
That's a really good question. I'm not sure. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm still. Uh, on my little learning journey for the Transportation Committee, but I'll definitely keep an eye out for any bills and or discussions along those lines, because I think that's really important.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea as an alternative.
There are a lot of conversations, I know, um, around. Uh, better regulating those e-bikes and and motor scooters and mopeds. So. You know, they're becoming a bigger presence on our roads and we should also account for them in our infrastructure.
I can just say, Tina, thank you so much for coming and congratulations for being our representative. Um, just kind of a voice from the past. Uh, you know, I've been on this neighborhood board for about forty years. And I remember in the, I won't call them the good old days, but way back when, uh, representatives. Uh, would come to most of the meetings. And that culture has seemed to have passed. And as much as we enjoy uh talking with your. You know, very competent staff, it is really a pleasure uh when you come. So I, I, we know you can't come every meeting, but if you can do your best to make as many meetings as you can, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, since the campaign, you know, I've tried to come to every meeting. I, I learn a lot here too. As you know, there's not always great communication between the city and the state and all the different departments. So every time I come, I'm learning something new. So I really will. Commit to being here as often as I can.
Does anybody in the community have any questions for Miss Grandinetti?
Just real quick, I, I like to second that. Like, I think Bertram set a standard with coming to a lot of meetings when we're coming before and like, it's really appreciated that you're still involved in our neighborhood board. Thank you.
Any questions from the community?
I have a question.
Oh, Casey.
Yes, um, just to let the neighborhood board know and the public, uh, the state elected officials, Representative Grandini and. Hashem and Senator Chang, they're our bosses too. So if you folks can talk to them and they can write. Letters to our director about your concerns at Honaka Intersection, that will also help. And since Representative Grandini is a vice chair for the House Transportation Committee, that's a big help too, because they review and pass our funding.
We've got a path forward.
Just to let you know that they're our bosses. So when they let us. Inform us about concerns upon the community, we have to address them too.
Thank you, Casey, for making those connections for us. And uh, Tina, I'll shoot you a text and we'll try. Letter of support for uh community who's concerned about this uh crazy crosswalk. Perfect. Um, any questions from the community again? We're all good. Thank you so much for showing up this evening. Thank you for making the time. Congratulations on the new appointment. And in complete opposition, is Representative Mark Hashem's office here?
Hi, yes, I am. Um, my name's Mahela Nidaniels. I'm so sorry that I can't be there tonight in person. Um. I'm Representative Hashem's committee clerk. And on top of that, I'm actually helping to raise a puppy. Then hopefully one day will turn into a service dog. So I'm sadly stuck at home tonight. Um, but I just wanted to be here to introduce myself, myself, either um I or our committee clerk or actually legislative aide. Uh, Jane will be with you all for the next couple of months. Um, just to take any questions, comments or concerns that you have back to Representative Hashem. And we'll see what we can do to address them. Um, Representative Grandinetti, you did such a wonderful job, kind of giving you an intro into the legislature and what's been going on. Um, and I'll just add for our office, we are the chair this year of Water and Land. So. A lot of important work to be done there. Um, and if you have any. Questions, comments or concerns related to that, we can do our best to address those as well. So thank you all so much.
Well, thank you for showing up. I actually can't remember when a representative from Mark Hashem's office actually uh showed up via Zoom or an attendance. So. Nice, nice to meet you. Thank you so much for for attending this evening. Um, I actually don't even know what Mark Hashem looks like. So if he's ever got some uh. Some free time, feel free to invite him on down and uh I hear from the community presents. Sure. Um, in terms of path forward, we have a letter here that could really use his signature and support for helping with this crosswalk issue. And as well as this uh, this police funding issue as well. Uh, we got a bunch of members of the community here. Uh, we've got needs, you guys got solutions, let's make something happen. So. Uh, I'll be emailing you guys that letter as well. So if you could respond to that with signatures, that would be excellent.
For sure. Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mark Hashem's representative? Nope. Anybody from the community? We'd like to see the dog, please.
He's sadly in hiding. I think it's all the new voices and everything. Uh, so he's in the back, but hopefully um, over the next couple of months, I'll be able to. Bring him out to say hello.
Christian, I think I have a photo of him on my telephone.
Oh, excellent.
See if I can find it.
At least, oh, are we talking about the dog or Mark Hashem? Uh, what's the uh, what's the dog's name?
His name is Boomer. He's about like four to five months old. Yeah, he's a little like Labrador Retriever, but his paws are giant. So we know he's gonna be both mighty in spirit and in size.
We love to hear that, especially for our service dogs. Please assure Boomer that he is a good boy. And as always, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Will do. Thank you.
Uh, up next, we have a representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office, Senator Stanley Chang. Oh, uh, no, no Teresa. Uh, rare for no one for his office to be here, but okay. Uh, up next. We have uh resident community concerns. Uh, just a pre-warning, we will be limiting to three minutes per concern. We are on a little bit of an expedited timeline due to. Uh, love it, the engagement that we've had this evening. So if we have any community concerns that wish to be heard, please uh stand up over by that microphone there and they will be. Go once, go twice. Sold. All right, up next, board business, unfinished business and presentations. Um, I'm gonna skip around for a quick second. Can we approve the previous meeting minutes from uh Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four? Sylvia, do we have any corrections for that? No corrections? Excellent. Um, all right, I say.
Motion.
Second, all approval? One, two, three, uh, Rich Lee. The eyes have it. All right, let's see. Um, up next, we have the temporary public art project. I believe we have Marion Kadoura, Mayor's Office. Perfect.
Aloha, Chair and Board. Mahalo for having us. My name is Ka'ili Trask and I am the Executive Director of Moka, which is the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. Thank you for having us tonight. So what we're here to to talk to you about tonight is to introduce a really exciting. A public art installation program. It's called Vahipana. And Vahipana is uh the result of a grant. From Bloomberg Philanthropies. It's a million-dollar grant. And through this grant, we'll be placing. Public art, temporary public art installations throughout all of Oahu. We'll be placing public art installations throughout all of Oahu um at various locations. And one of them. Uh, one of the installations, which actually has four different sites, will be at Leahie. Um, I think you all are getting information about Vahipana. Our first phase launches in February. And our installations for February will include, um, first of all, a bus wrap. So you'll see a few buses around town. With the uh Vahipana uh branding and encouraging everyone to go to the various sites. We will also have um installations at Fort Street, Fort Street Mall, Fort DeRusi. And the final installation is uh for Phase One will be Leahie. And Leahie has four locations. Um, with me tonight, I have Marion Kadoura. With me tonight, I have Marion Kadoura, our public art curator from Moka, as well as Catherine Orleans, who is from Oahu Visitors Bureau. Catherine, along with many other community members, have been working with us the last year to bring this program together. As you can imagine, identifying various sites and artists and it has taken a lot of coordination. So we're really excited to get, be getting this launched. And I'm going to hand it over to Marion, who will talk more specifics about the installation at Leahie.
Aloha, everyone. Um, so this installation that will be, um, in Triangle Park, I think the official name is Operation Red Wings Medal of Honor Park. Is, uh, a series of, um, tempered glass signs that are created by, um, Hawaii's poet laureate Brandy Nalani McDougall. And, um, one thing that I do want to say is I apologize that we are coming a bit, um, with not so much time in, in advance. Um, there was some changes to this project. We didn't think we were going to be, um, working with this particular park, but we had been going to the other neighborhood boards. And there was a last minute change to, um, utilize this, this particular park. So her, this project, um, is inspired by the concept of ka'apuni, which is to encircle, to travel, to, to make a circuit. And, um, along the lines with the entire project about Vahipana or Story Places, this project is meant to, um, convey a layered history, um, around the summit of Leahie. And stories, um, about, uh, the history and the place, um, through a forty stanzas, uh, poem that Brandy Nalani McDougall has created. And excerpts of the poem will be presented on these, um, tempered glass signs that will be placed, um, in various, um, places around Leahie. That the in is, um, encourage do that common circuit that people do around Leahie, but with a bit more curiosity and a bit more, um, opportunities for learning where they are, um, and the places that, that, um, uh, we, we are inhabiting on a daily basis. So, uh, in this pamphlet, and hopefully it looks like you guys have the digital version now, which is great. You'll see the, uh, different placements and the stanzas that she's proposing to have, um, in, in the parks. The, these would be, um, uh, installed from February this year, February to, um, twenty twenty-eight February. So this is a three-year project. We will be monitoring, um, the sites. Um, we have a regular maintenance, art maintenance program, um, where we, uh, wash and wax and maintain the sculptures that, um, are in our collection. So this will be part of that maintenance program. And then I'm just going to hand it over to Kat, just in case she's got anything, um, anything that I missed.
Aloha, everyone. I'm a neighbor in Palolo. Um, just added some comments earlier, but I work for the Visitor Bureau for Oahu. We're part of the Hawaii Visitor and Convention Bureau. This project has been really exciting for us because it's a story that we get to tell. I love who came together, the artists, the storytellers, what they're really trying to do in the funding through Bloomberg is tell a story that's been hidden for so many years due to over tourism, things like that. So telling our sense of place from the people and our histories and what we value at the same time, elevating up our local artists through this uh, huge project. We're one of eight cities out of hundreds across the U.S. that applied for this grant. And out of, um, eight that were able to win it. So there's a huge amount of support, um, from Bloomberg Philanthropies, as well as many stakeholders like Hawaii Tourism Authority as well, who is funding the project through, um, state funds through the tourism tax as well. So we're trying to really reinvest tourism dollars back into our community through projects like this that help to educate not only our visitors, but also our residents who may not know that much about public art. And this is somewhat more accessible than going to a museum. You're in our beautiful environment. And you're hopefully learning and seeing the stories that our native people are telling. So that these sites will also have translations in A'lela Hawaii. So you won't see any visitor languages. You're only going to see English and Hawaiian, so our state languages. So we're really excited to get to promote this, but also tell the stories of our artists and hopefully also revitalize China town through some of these, um, sites that we have throughout the island. So hopefully this is a good example of regenerative tourism in the making for everyone to kind of join in and join the Huakai with us. So mahalo and we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Theresa, so much for coming down here, sharing this exciting project. Um, you know, thanks to Bloomberg for giving us money. That's awesome. Um, you know, I would hope that the state would also provide some funds in the near future. Uh, it is great to see artists being supported. It is great to see the community having new things placed in it that we can all kind of gather around a third-party meeting space where community can gather. In terms of the installations themselves, uh, you know, off the top of my head, graffiti. Somebody graffiti is one of the things you mentioned, uh, waxing, washing, and, uh, sort of like a response team. What kind of response can we be looking for in terms of a timeline for getting these kinds of things fixed?
Um, it, you, it would be great if you actually just went through and you contacted the mayor's office because those get, um, those emails are sent to us directly. So that would be like the easiest way to remember. You can also just call the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts or email us. Or, um, if you Google us, you'll find our, our contact. And then as soon as we hear about graffiti, we're down there almost immediately.
Oh, wow.
So, um, and either we work with parks. I mean, our response is pretty quick. So I have, um, a crew of contractors that I have, um, kind of on call for any emergency maintenance. So we're able to kind of do it pretty quickly. But, um, park staff is also, um, a resource for us as well if we're not able to get to it right away.
Wow, that, that's amazing. Thank you so much. Um, does anybody on the board have any questions?
Just a quick one. Wonderful, wonderful program. So it's going to be on the buses, the side of the buses? Is that, is that how, or is it going to be inside the bus?
Yes, it will be actually be, the bus will actually be wrapped. Like with, with the, with the, uh, we have, that was one artist in itself. The bus wrap was, uh, Corey Tom is our artist and he has come up with the design. You can, I guess you don't actually see it on that handbook that you have, but if you go to our website, you can start to see some of the branding and the designs that he's done. But yes, it'll be on the bus. It'll be wrapped. We're hoping to wrap two to three buses. And then, and then inside the buses, we will have, um, placards explaining about the artwork and what the, uh, Vahipana program is. And then we will eventually have an audio, um, layer around where people can hear about the stories from the artists. They can hear melee about the different locations. So there is a lot that we've been working to bring together for the community.
So in our area, we're going to have four sites of the Makale Beach Park, Leahie Beach, uh, Park, Port Ruger, and KCC. So that next to church or next to bus stop, that's on Montserrat, Montserrat, yeah. Okay, Diamond, okay, Diamondhead Road and Leahie Beach Park, that's
Yes.
Diamondhead, that's Diamondhead Beach, right? And Makale Beach Park is. One of, one of my intelligent colleagues can tell me where it is.
So, so Makale and Leahie Beach Park are, um, if you're coming from Kapialani Park and you're going towards, uh, Diamondhead, uh, beach. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Okay, so.
Celebrations when they're installed?
So we'll make sure to inform the board about celebrations. So, uh, let's see, it's February twenty-first is going to be the opening for this particular project. But we'll make sure that you have the, the full lineup of the opening events and it would be wonderful to have.
We can bring a bottle of champagne to celebrate.
Yes. Yeah, they will be, they'll be in the morning. Um, so we'll have coffees and that sort of thing, but you're welcome to bring champagne.
Oh, and then.
You know, I just want to add, you asked if this, if, you know, for this area of you're getting four. So the Leahie installation is actually four separate locations. Because it was a poem. Yeah, it's, how do you feature poetry, right? So it's, it's really exciting. I, I think you'll love it. Um, the, the signs are very interactive with the landscape and the, the Vahipana itself.
Very cool. Um, you know, it's not our district, so it's none of my business asking for it, but the, uh, the buses that you guys are going to do the wraps and the installation and the melee in. You know, I would propose forth that you guys consider installing those in bus routes that travel through more Hawaiian areas, uh, where you have a higher concentration of Hawaiian people. So that way, you know, it's going to be super tempting to do it in the Waikiki buses because, you know, we love to cater to the tourists, but also, uh, from my own personal experiences, a lot of people who are, you know, want to learn about Hawaiian culture but haven't had access to it are Hawaiian. So even if it's on their daily commute to work, I think that would be, uh, exceptionally touching, uh, way to go about this. And, you know, not just for tourists, not just for people in nice areas, but for all of us.
Absolutely. You bring up a really good point. Um, our audience, um, as we've developed this program is, is visitors, yes, but actually definitely the Kama'aina are people here because I can guarantee you, we don't all know all the stories of the various locations throughout all of Oahu. So I know, um, people are going to be very interested in learning more about those stories. So we absolutely are, are targeting the Kama'aina.
Glad it's my heart to hear that. Thank you guys so much for showing up this evening. Uh, any last second questions?
Chair, uh, John Ouchi here from DTS again, if it's okay, before our Moka friends, our Moka family leaves. Um, wanted to speak a little bit about the bus announcements. I mean, the bus, um, uh, assignment there. We do plan to deploy the bus to as many different places as we can. Part of the goal that we, we wanted to achieve with Moka was actually putting buses in both of our operating divisions so that they could actually run on most routes in our city based on where we can send a standard bus. So you're not going to be seeing anything climbing Monolani Heights or going up Wailei Noe Ridge, but you are going to see them on the mainline routes and take our standard forty-foot bus. And we're going to just try to get those to as many places as possible and absolutely not limit them to the tourist areas.
Awesome. This is what I love to see from our government. Good coordination across the board. Um, if you guys are looking for more funding in the near future, there happens to be a District Twenty representative sitting right over there. So go rub elbows after this, please, and thank you.
I absolutely want a pair of visit too. Um, glad to hear, uh, about transportation leadership. It's really good to hear.
Absolutely.
And then I guess, is there a ability to keep, continue to, continue to wrap more buses? Or is that we just like stuck at, what'd you say, like?
Two to three. It's all about budget. Yeah, it's, as you can imagine, it's not, it's pretty expensive to wrap them.
Okay.
But I would like to.
Have they been wrapped already? Like February is like right around the corner.
Yeah, it's, yes, we, we'll be wrapping it, uh, by the end of this month, the first one. Yeah. And, you know, um, thank you to John Ouchi. I'd just like to show that this has been a really pretty incredible, um, collaboration, not only from the different city, city departments, whether it was transportation, Parks and Recreation, Office of Economic Revitalization, but also Oahu Visitors Bureau, who we have here tonight. Huhonua Society, Bishop Museum. We've had quite a bit of collaboration. So I think that's what makes this program even especially, um, unique.
Absolutely. We do have one question from the community. It appears as though, hold on a second. Carol Hoshiko, are you there?
Yes, yes. Um, thank you Chair for the recognition. Uh, yes, my question is, um, you mentioned that there is going to be one of the, um, one of the art pieces is going to be at Kapialani Community College, and that's where I work. Has it been, um, settled yet, uh, where it's going to be on the campus? Are you working with our Aha'kala Ualani Council or who are you working with?
Uh, this is Marion. I, that's a good question. I am, I'm working with Chloe Clang. Chloe, you know, I, I don't have their emails and, um, I, I'll have to, get back to you on who I'm working with at KCC, but we're still working out details on, on the placement, but we have a proposed placement.
Oh.
And I would be happy to send the names to you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I do a lot of the outreach. So if there's anything that I can do to help facilitate a conversation, I'll be happy to assist with that. But we do have a Native Hawaiian council on our campus. Um, it's called Aha'kala Ualani, and I'm sure that they would be interested in this.
Oh, that's great to know. Yeah. We would love to be able to, to collaborate with KCC in terms of, um, educational programming around it as well. So that would be great to hear.
Thank you.
Well, and KCC's got that great new culinary academy. Uh, actually, Carol, you sent me the slides earlier today. Um, progress is coming along great. Construction's going along well. But also, you know, might if, uh, we got a little bit of extra budget laying around somewhere, maybe get some, uh, art installation in or repurpose some, just throwing that out there.
I think one of the artists is a, is a tenured professor there, so.
The Synoji.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like, isn't Ka'ili a professor at KCC still?
Had been, yes.
Anymore she's.
She's not there anymore. Well, she used to be a professor there.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. She's got, she's got her tenure at the U8, that's right.
Well, awesome. Thank you guys so much for your time this evening. We look forward to seeing this around the island. Due to the, uh, time limit which we have upon us, I'm going to skip the alternative meeting venue discussions. It's something we talk about every meeting. It can wait one more time. I do know that, uh, Robert Purnell, I saw you here for, uh, there you are. I know that, uh, you'd spoken with myself and Amanda Zepeda. We have three minutes. If you have, uh, another community concern that you wanted to bring forth, I know that you're, uh, I think traveling right now. So you made the mirror. Want to make sure you get seen. Oh, you're, uh, you're muted.
Aloha.
There we go. Now we can hear you. Yes, sir. Three minutes on the board.
Good evening. Well, you have the email I've sent to you. You and I have spoken in, by phone, and I thank you for your response. I thank you also to Amanda, if you're still there attending the meeting, for your response. The matter is regarding Moa Street and the pickup location of choice for those people attending the Sony Open and parking their cars in Kahala Community Park. And the matter is regarding our, the congestion, the, uh, the issues regarding access to our driveways, illegal parking, people coming in, dropping off passengers to join the shuttle service. This has been raised before by my wife, Brooke, who was on past, uh, neighborhood board. We're asking now that you review this, um, to choose another location and that is better suited for this purpose. Moa Street is by far the narrowest of, and, um, of streets in the immediate location of this better, uh, locations, wider streets for these buses to park and await collection of the passengers, um, who have parked their cars in the community park. This is about hazards, hazards, about the community, the congestion, the noise, risk management, potential for pedestrians. And I note two earlier comments or earlier comments from, um, a gentleman and his wife who attended there. People do not, necessarily take all care when turning. Our street is very narrow. It's very congested as it is. We're asking for the committee to consider a motion resolution to select another location in the nearby area, not on, on, on our street, not on Moa Street. But perhaps on alternative streets so buses can park and pick up their passengers and go to the, to and fro. and pick up their passengers and go to and from the Sony Open. I'd like to know what has been considered and how we go forward with this. This has been going on for years. Now, I'm not just talking about now. It has been going on for years. Last year, I rang the contact line at Sony Open. They said they would do something about it. I was merely asking that buses are more evenly spaced so people can get across the road safely, turn their engines off, but nothing was done. So that's our position. Several residents have run me, I'm in Australia. I'm an Australian citizen, but reside as a resident on Moa Street. And people are contacting me here over the last 10 days. So what is it that you feel can be suggested that can be done to help us with this situation? Thank you.
So Mr. Purnell did reach out to me directly. Upon his request, I did end up going down to Moa Street, that park, that day. And there was a ton of parked cars jutting out into the road. It was very difficult to navigate. It was an imposition on the residents in that area. I can't confirm all of that myself. Amanda, are you there in person and able to talk for a quick second?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. So a couple of quick questions. One, how can we make the, well, first off, one, does Sony pay, does the Sony Open pay to rent these parks from us? So when they're parking in our community parks, are they, are they paying for that?
You know, that's I don't know if Deputy Director Ouchi can speak better to that. I would imagine they don't. I would be surprised if they.
So the actually, John Nitsch, would you have an answer for this as well? John, I think you're on mute.
I would probably have to defer to parks on this, but generally when events use the city parks, unless they're actually reserving a part of it, I don't think that they charge for things. Additionally, I mean, yeah, so it would depend on their usage of the facility.
So they're parking in the parks for several days, but they're not paying for any of it? To host a private golf tournament? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
I mean, I don't know the particulars of their usage, if they're actually parking in the park or what's going on there. But if I had a little more information, I can, I mean, I'm definitely taking this down for response for next, next meeting.
Awesome. Okay. Yeah. So one way or the other, you know, we could definitely be charging for this kind of stuff.
I excuse me. Read to section. We do understand they did get a usage permit.
Okay. And then, so if they're violating the goodwill, I'm assuming there's goodwill section of that, that permit that requires them to act in a certain manner, a certain way, to kind of police themselves?
Yes, for the street uses permit, my department does maintain a certain standard of acting. But it's basically whether, whether they're breaking any rules of it or, and there is a standard for, you know, for, for the good of the public or for the good of the event or for a bunch of other criteria. So we can look into exactly what their operations were. But in terms of, if they have a street uses permit to actually ban parking on the street, their shuttles can pick up. But let me look into what was the exact usage and what they were restricted to. And then we can maybe line that up with what the neighborhood experienced and see if that is accurate.
Yeah, so my concern isn't that there are buses there. You know, we want events in our community. We want people excited to be here and doing things amongst us. My concern was that the situation that they created as expressed to me was that it created a dangerous situation and also was an undue burden on the community. And so, you know, we have no problem hosting these events. We have no problems, you know, welcoming this business, this tax revenue. There's money. We love it. But, you know, in terms of just them feeling like they can do whatever the hell they want, I consider that to be a different category. So if we can kind of get some clarification on this, Mr. Purnell, I'll keep you linked into this as well, just so we can continue this conversation. But I would like to, I would like to feel like the community is being valued and considered a little bit more moving forward in these things, rather than they've got the permit, they can do whatever the hell they want. And then, yeah, actually, Mr. Purnell had also expressed to me the trash situation. And there was trash everywhere, which, you know, is never, there's never an excuse for that. There's never an excuse for littering. So whatever we can do to kind of hold these guys to a higher standard, make sure we execute on this, that would be an easy one for us.
Could I actually just inquire? I know we're running short on time, but what, what is the allegation of what laws did they break? Or what, what rules did they appear to break? I mean, I just want to be able to investigate it. And we can actually follow up in a post-conference with the event organizer.
May I respond in that matter? There's no rules being broken, other than those people, those private motorists who choose the opposite side of the road to where the buses are parked to stop, block driveways, drop people off, pick people up. What we're asking for is the pickup and drop-off location, which is currently located adjacent to or adjoining the restrooms and all the construction activity that's been going on there. You move the pickup, drop-off location where buses can adequately park, find parking and pick up their, and drop off their, you know, their passengers. There's, there's much wider streets, nearby streets. You've got Kilauea that's, that's twice the width.
I'm so sorry, Robert, we have to, we're running late on time over here just with all the community concerns that we've had. But rest assured, you and I are going to talk more about this. John, you and I will communicate, as well as Amanda Zapata. Let's see if we can get something a little bit better figured out. Also, the event is already over. So that way, as it prepares up for next year, we'll have solutions in place before it arrives, not during. Is that agreeable to everybody here?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, awesome. Robert, thank you so much for making the time to FaceTime in over from Australia. Amanda, John, appreciate you both for your responsiveness and openness to hearing us out. Up next, upcoming events. Nawahine Racing. I believe you have two announcements to make. Do we have any representatives from Nawahine Racing? The Hawaii Pacific Health Women's 10K and 5K Fund Run. I've got all the information here, so I'll just announce it myself. So this Sunday, January 26, 2025, the Hawaii Pacific Health Women's 10K and 5K Park. And it's going to be starting at 6:30 AM. So if you have business or plans in the area, please be aware of that. Up next, the Nawahine Sprint Triathlon, occurring Sunday, July 27, 2025. Same location, Kapialani Park. And start time of that is going to be 6 AM. The race organizers have coordinated with special duty police officers for traffic management and roadway solutions for road signage. So there will be protections in place. Reminder to everybody here on the board and anybody interested in running for Neighborhood Board, you get to serve with me, which is a downside. But on the bright side, you get to serve with everybody else. They are wonderful. Please make sure you go online. If the people on the board now, please make sure you renew your candidacy. We'd love to see you guys back. So make sure you get those submitted, upload a beautiful profile photo, fun little description of yourself, and we can get that going and see everybody back. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for February 20, 2025. We will be located again at this location, the Alawai Golf Course, second floor, no longer Pakihale because somebody outbid us and beat us to the B, which is a shame. So we'll be meeting here one month from now, February 20, 7 PM, second floor. Get involved, get concerned, please get involved with your community. For the love of God, we want to hear everything that you guys have to say. So please get involved. Up that, do I have a motion to dismiss? Woo! And it's over, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for showing up this evening. It's been an absolute blast.